Okay, folks, it be seven o'clock and I get to kick this off. We do not get to call to order or anything else. We do our election of officers first. So I am going to open the nominations for Chair of the Planning Commission. Mom, folks. Okay, then I'm going to take privilege.
No, no, Kevin.
No one's got to stand up.
Yeah, Kevin. I'm sorry, Kevin.
Kevin.
I can't see you.
I'm sorry. So can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I know this is always a fun, fun thing to go through. So we have a lot of really capable people and I'm not sure who wants to do this and who doesn't want to do this, but I think our former Planning Commission member and former council member and now back again, a Planning Commission member, Paul, probably would still be doing this if he hadn't taken a sabbatical and went to council for a little while. If he's, if he's willing, I would like to nominate Paul to be our Planning Commission Chairman. That would be my nomination.
There a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? That I call for a vote? Karen, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
I abstain.
Then I thankfully turn this over to our chairman. Go, Paul.
Well, you know, I thank you all. I really thought you would have learned the last time I did this. It's a privilege and an honor to chair these meetings. It does require me to think a little more than that I'm used to, so. But I'll do the best I can. So thank you all. So we need a vice chair, so I'll be looking for nominations. Kevin?
Again, we have a lot of really capable people and you're all great, but Ms. Young, if you, Commissioner Young, if you would be interested in being a vice chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Young because again, most experienced next to Paul does a great job and be honored if you would do the vice chair as well.
Yes, I would.
Second. If you need one.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Karen, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Young?
Abstain.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Sorry, Chair Gerard. Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Susan. Would you like to say a few words?
Later.
I have no doubt. All right, we will call a meeting to order. Karen, if you would take, well, we have the role, but could we take the role, please, formally?
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Batty?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Keen?
Here.
Commissioner Brink?
Here.
And Chair Gerard.
Here. I'd ask if you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you want to turn your video off. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Number five on the agenda tonight is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brink. Second?
A second.
By Commissioner Miller. It's non-negotiable, so we'll take a roll, please. I guess it is debatable. Any discussion? I'm sorry. I'm a little rusty at this. All right, since hearing none, Karen, you take the role, please.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard.
Aye. Next is to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the February 10th, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Young?
I move that we approve the Planning Commission minutes of the February 10th, 2021 meeting.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion on? I can't second? Oh, because I'm going to abstain. Dang, I told you I was rusty. Commissioner Miller?
I'll second.
Should have put a pro in here.
Reconsidering that nomination.
Then a motion and a second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. Karen, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard.
Aye. I'm sorry, I abstained. I had it right the first time. Should have taken my vitamins this morning. Next up is the high school concession building sign, CUP. I assume Donovan that you're giving the presentation?
Yes, sir.
All yours.
Chair, members of Planning Commission, I'd like to present the CUP amendment to actually act as an amendment to the CUP amendment approved by the Planning Commission in October. And this relates to, and this, the whole project related to athletic field improvements, stadium reconstruction, multi-purpose field construction, track reconstruction, really some great improvements over there at the high school. However, one piece that evidently didn't make into that packet that the Planning Commission approved was signage for the ticket concession and restroom building on the north end of the of the, of the football field and track. And so what I'd like to do is share what the Planning Commission did. Can you see the share?
Yep.
For some reason, I, oh, here we go. So you can see basically is about a, you know, sorry, eighteen, about twenty foot, twenty square feet signs at Rangers. Well, that's not showing enough Ranger spirit. So what is, is proposed, I believe this was probably the original intention, is a illuminated 113 square foot sign with FL, FL logo on each end. And this is on that building on the north side. Let me kind of orient you here a little bit. And so what we see is, of course, good views to the, on the top of the screen here. This is north would be to your, to your, your left. And so this proposed building here. So the signage is proposed to be on the west side, that the large Ranger and FL configuration I showed. And then on that north side of the building, a smaller, where's that? Sorry, this, a smaller eighteen square foot FL logo. And both of these are proposed to be illuminated with the larger one facing the west, which faces over those, the athletic fields. This one faces north to the high school parking lot. And where it's hundreds of feet to either the property line and no direct facing nearby residential across Goodview Avenue. The school district says these will only be illuminated during events. And the the recommendation is for approval with conditions that the required building and electrical plans be obtained, the signs be built in accordance with approved plans, and the ticket concession restroom building sign signage be turned off after 10:00 PM. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the Planning Commission. And I should also, I'm sorry, I should also say Larry Martini from the school district is here to represent the application. Greetings, Larry.
Any questions for the staff? Commissioner Miller?
Donovan, do you know in comparison to the other sign that we approved that is on the current athletic building that faces 61, in terms of the size of the lettering and in terms of the size of the sign, what is the comparison of this sign? You know, when we originally approved that sign, I guess we all kind of misunderstood the actual size of it, because I think some of us wish it wasn't as large as it is. But could you give us a comparison in terms of the lettering and the logo size compared to that sign?
I, perhaps Larry has the exact square footage on that. My recollection, it's around 350 square feet. This one at, at 113 is about one-third of that size.
No, I understand in terms of the overall length, but I'm talking about the height of the sign
Oh.
versus, you know, on the letters compared to the other one in terms of the height of the letters.
Okay, so the height of these letters is 39 inches, you know, just a little over three feet.
It's large.
And that's, yeah, that's for the, actually, that's for the FL, that's for the logos. The letters themselves, I'm sorry, are listed at they're about, about, about 30 inches.
So without too much work, you, or maybe Larry knows, in terms of comparative to the sign on the athletic building, height of those letters, are they similar or is this smaller? By how much?
I don't know the exact amount, but it's definitely smaller. Those on the fieldhouse are feet. That's enormous.
Yeah, they, yes, they are. You're right. They are. We approved it, so I can't, you know. I was just looking for a comparison.
Commissioner Keen? Go ahead, Commissioner Keen.
Well, what I read on the report was that the sign that we approved in October of 2020, there was 20 square foot not illuminated, and now they want 113 square feet illuminated. So that, that's a big difference. That's like six times the size of what we approved. I don't need, I guess, I don't need, I don't know why it needs to be that big, the letters, the logo, and that's just the FL logo. I don't know what the real logo is. Is it the horse? Is it the FL? Is it the Rangers? What's the real logo? But their diagram says FL. I think that the the lettering and everything out on the fieldhouse, when you, when you're coming up 61, it looks hideous. It's just so gaudy and it's, it's like advertising, not Forest Lake High School, Forest Lake School District. And this is just a concession stand out by the field. Everybody coming in there, they know where to get a hot dog. They know where the bathrooms are. I don't think it needs to be 113 square feet illuminated with all this stuff on the sides and, you know, to tell people where it's at and have it illuminated. And I don't know, that's just my opinion. It's a ticket booth. Everybody's going to be walking right by it on the way in. I mean, we approved a 20, 20 square foot sign before and I'm, if you look at the pictures, that's just fine. It says Rangers, you know, maybe put up, if they want to add a couple more small ones on the sides, it'd say FL. I'm for that, but I don't know, that just seems like a, another hideous display of the high school, that's all.
Other questions for staff? See no hands raised. Thank you, Donovan, for your presentation. We do have Larry Martini from the school district here. Larry, would you like to add any comments or?
Just one quick comment. This was an idea from the high school principal and architect that came about in November. So it was after your approval, but before the folks had put everything together for bidding and they really would like to see this. It would only be on during events. And so I would urge your approval. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Young?
Mr. Martini, having just a little bit of experience with school signs, have you gotten Booster Club donations or a private benevolent donation for the increased cost of this sign?
We did not get any donations there after donations for all sorts of other activities, but not a sign-specific donation, no.
There is a very significant cost difference. And so I, I kind of assumed that if, that if you were going for that, that you were, were doing that because you'd gotten, you know, specific donations from the Booster Clubs or somebody in Forest Lake to support that sign. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Larry, I have one. It has to do with orientation of the views on your drawings. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm right. I always consider the football fields being south at a high school, which I would be looking at the elevation of which would be the north elevation. So the north elevation is just going to have the FL facing the parking lot and then facing basically the visitors, leechers will be the Ranger, welcome to Ranger territory or whatever it says exactly. Is that correct?
That's close to correct. We have two parking lots. The one that was existing and resurfaced, the FL would face that. And then we also have the parking area that was expanded towards the district office. And so Donovan's got his cursor there. Welcome to Ranger territory would be shining onto that parking area. And people will walk in to the right side of the ticket booth as they approach from that parking area.
Thank you. Other questions of the applicant? Seeing no hands, this is not a public hearing, but do we know if there's anyone who wanted to speak to this issue? We're usually pretty no one in there we know of already. You know, personally, it's going to, to me, the sign's going to be on during the game. It's going to be off the rest of the time. I don't have a lot of problem with this big sign, especially since it's facing their parking lot, but that's just my opinion. So I'd be looking for either further discussion or a motion. Mr. Batty?
I just, for the record, we're, we're setting, or again, setting a precedent. And just, it's not going to be any secret and you're going to have other people come wanting and they're going to point to this. And the other sign, I've, I probably had there's two, two things in my tenure on the commission here that have garnered the most attention to me by the Forest Lake citizenry. And one of them was this sign on the, on the fieldhouse. Some of them are even people who are part of the, you know, part of the school district, wondered how on earth that happened.
Other comments? Commissioner Keen?
I really don't have a problem with them putting signs on it, having it lit up and some of that. I just think it's a big waste of taxpayers' money that they're going from a 20 square foot sign to 113 square foot sign illuminated. And who knows else is it going to be, are they going to have signs in there where it says, come and get your hot dogs and, you know, things moving around on it? Or is it just a stationary sign? You know, and like Commissioner Batty said, you know, I've gotten a lot of comments on the sign on that fieldhouse. How, basically, it's hideous. It's just, it's advertising for the school district, not saying this is Forest Lake High School and we're proud of it.
Commissioner Miller?
Donovan, can you tell me and tell us in terms of sign ordinances, is this, it's not, it's not within the actual ordinance of our allowed signs, is it?
No, that's, that is something is different here. I mean, there are maximum square footages of 200 square feet for a commercial sign and a commercial district, commercial wall sign. This obviously is a residential district, you know, schools are conditional use within those. So basically, we are creating different rules for it. I mean, I understand the, how some might argue there's a precedent with this type of sign. But essentially, it's, it's a special case. Because it sits, there are activities here that occur nowhere else. And and I, you know, I understand the conversation around the initial fieldhouse sign. And I tend to agree with that one as well, but you know, we are looking at now a different, different signage, one that's not going to be on, you know, 24, you know, 24/7 like the fieldhouse signage. And I did do a little check with one of our staff members who lives in the area on, who's younger, has kids in schools, on, you know, what did he think the size, you know, was? And he talked about, you know, Chisago, I guess, has a new athletic facility and in other schools and how this size was pretty much in line with what we, what he's seen at other schools in the area, and his daughter's in athletics. So he's visited a number of these. And so I kind of took that as, I think, as a kind of my check on, well, is this appropriate or not? I'm not, I'm not a football fan. I don't really know the, you know, the athletic culture. I didn't want to insert my personal opinion on this, but more of, okay, what's, what's suitable for this to express the Ranger spirit or something that's, you know, meant for these kind of festival events, which athletic, you know, events are, you know, it's the Friday Night Lights, you know, football, you know, it could be track, could be other kind of pep rallies or anything of this, of that sort. And so that's, that's what I base in my recommendation on and the, with the school districts, you know, agreement to only hold, you know, keep it on during, during events. I put as a condition of approval, nothing past 10, which matches the other illuminated signs for their, that they've have, you know, on the, on the, like for the other monument sign. And I think, or maybe it's the parking lights, I'm sorry. I think it's the parking lots, but there was the 10:00 PM illumination limit. So so that's kind of where, where my thinking is. And it's just, it's, the signage seems to match better, you know, in line with other communities' athletic signage.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Miller, did you hand him?
Yep. Sorry, I thought you said Commissioner Young. You know, again, I appreciate that. And I, I don't necessarily have an issue with the sign. I was just really trying to make a comparison just in my mind in terms of the size. I mean, there's nothing better than as a parent or as a student walking up to an event and having your pride and your name, you know, on those things that people can see, especially when visitors come. So I was just trying to really make a comparison in terms of the size.
Commissioner Young?
Commissioner Batty made a good point that I hadn't quite thought of yet, and that was that this is a precedent and we have Lakes International Language Academy has two schools that are in residential areas also, which would, of course, expect to be able to have similar-sized signs. And North Lakes Academy would also, I expect, be interested in a similar-sized sign. So we just, if we approve this, we just need to understand that, that that's where we're going. And we're, but, you know, but I, it, Commissioner, I appreciate that point.
Other comments? Commissioner Keen?
No, I'm not going to say it.
All right. Since we've, have no questions or comments remaining, the chair is looking for a motion. We'll see where this goes. I'll make a motion to approve the signs for the Forest Lake High School concession stand with the three recommendations of the staff. Commissioner Miller?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? See nobody raising their hand? Karen, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Batty?
What was, I'm sorry, what was that? No.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
No.
Commissioner Brink?
No.
And Chair Gerard?
Yes. Could you tell me what the final was? I was a little, I lost some of the audio. I'm not quite sure of the vote count.
Three on three.
We have three to three.
Commissioner Young?
Three yes, three no.
Commissioner Young, can you owe me on what, how does that affect the motion?
Motion fails.
That's what I thought. Any other motions? Hearing none? Otherwise, the motion fails, which I understand is correct, means we are denying the sign. Is that correct, Commissioner Young?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. That is correct.
Thank you. So the results are in, as they say. So what happens next, Larry, is that this, if you wish, you can appeal this decision to the city council. I believe you have one week to get something to the staff. I'm not sure if it goes to Donovan or to Karen or who it goes to. Can either one of you answer that for me?
If it's going to the council, you would send it, if it's going to the council, I think you would send it in to me so I can get it onto a council agenda.
Very good. So Larry, if you send any, if you wish to appeal, please send it to Karen and she'll get it on for the council agenda.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Thank you. Thank you for attending this evening. Move on to Move on to number eight addition of the industrial zoning land use and draft interstate commerce. Text, district text, and this is a discussion. So it will be, I assume Donovan, what you're just looking for is some input tonight. We won't be making any motions.
That is correct.
All yours.
Thank you. So this is, we've done a couple of these conversations before, but this is, I'm, I think I need to get much more rapid with these. So this is the beginning of a series of conversations related to the comprehensive rezoning in order to make the zoning code consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan. Some of the, so in some ways we'll do something of a helicopter view and, and start to drill in on the details. But first, I'd like to get some broad guidance from the planning commission on some of the, some of the uses involved here, so, and potential uses, land uses within the city. And these are taking, I'm looking at pieces that were part, you know, part of the comprehensive plan text. And then saying, you know, is this something that, or else is this something that you want me to investigate further? Or in some of these cases, these represent inquiries I've had from, you know, from, from residents, from businesses. And I'd like to see, kind of take the temperature of the planning commission on, well, what do you think? It's something that, again, you'd like to see in our city or something to explore. And obviously, you know, as Chair Gerard mentioned, this is all discussion, no decisions are being made here. But I think it can be really useful to give me, give staff direction on, on what you'd like to see and how you'd like to see the, the plan, the comprehensive plan implemented within the zoning code. First of all, the, on the agenda is the, is a twofold regarding industrial zoning districts. And first of, the first one comes out of kind of a need, I think, to, this is something I brought up before when we were talking about the interstate property, interstate removals with their CUP last summer. And this related to, well, what, you know, what potential uses could be there that could also, that could kind of reflect what the, where the market is, the size of the parcels. And there are many reasons that are industrial zoned land is vacant, but some of them could be zoning. So I'd like to at least investigate, explore, propose some, some potential land uses that perhaps could go within that, the industrial zoning district. And this one, just to give you, allow you, leave, if you don't know, this, where this industrial zoning district is, it's surrounding the airport. So I can give you a little bit of a screen here that'll kind of locate you with the, the areas there, it's purple on the zoning map. And these are areas that are bounded by Highway 97 to the north, Forest Road to the east. And then, and basically coming around to the, as far as developable land, around to the Forest Lake Industrial Park, the city on parcels on the, on the west side of the, of the airport. Fortunately, the, the city has sold two of these to the, the owner of Team Vanage, who's going to relocate his custom mold design building here to fill in those. So there's a manufacturing facility. Within the zoning district, it's, you know, there's, industrial zoning district permitted uses are the ones you'd expect. And the ones that involve industrial condominium, multi-tenant structure, I'll display that also. And they, you know, so if you can, can you, can you read text on your screen? Is that useful? Okay. So we have industrial condominium, multi-tenant structure, manufacturing, medical office, the airport, public facility, public recreation, warehousing, distribution, research and technology center, wholesaling. Those are the permitted uses. We have a few more related to conditional that relate to like commercial recreation, transportation, motor freight terminal, commercial kennels and the like. And then we have place of worship, leasing space or school facility leasing space, and that allows for that ice rink to be there. And so thinking of doing some examination, you know, kind of looking at some other areas, some of our peer cities in Minnesota. And just to, you know, a preliminary look, I've felt a list here that was in your packet, shown here in the bullet points around what are potential ones that could be added? And this is kind of where, as a discussion item, I'd like to, you know, just throw things out and, and definitely have, you know, just the free conversation, yea or nay, what do you think? Or, you know, I'll have pen in hand, you know, do you think these fit or not? This is just for the, just for this industrial, the I industrial zoning district. So what I'm seeing here potentially is data centers, bakery wholesale, health recreation facility, contractor operations, and this is essentially what I was discussing with the interstate project when I talked about standards last August with them, with that application. Food processing, laboratories, showrooms, adult oriented businesses, which that's a whole different discussion, but it's potentially where we, you know, we need to place those somewhere within the city as a, as a first amendment right. But let's not, let's not spend much time on that, I'll come back as a, as a, as a, you know, as its own individual standalone. But potentially that would, could be located industrial zoning districts, fitness centers, private recreation facilities, brewery tap room with onsite drinking and eating as accessory uses, micro distillery with onsite drinking and eating as accessory uses. So I'd like to kind of throw the floor open to members, I mean, what do you, what do you think about any one of these?
Commissioner Miller?
Donovan, is there a possibility you can pull up our zoning map and point out the different industrial areas in our city besides those out by the airport?
Certainly. So.
Cause I assume it would apply to all industrial areas at this point if we made changes.
Well, this is, this is, this is specific to the I industrials, what I'm saying right here. Obviously we have, we have three current types of, of industrial zoning districts. And I mean, I'm sorry, two different types. And then, and then we'll talk about the next one, that one that would be, you know, in that southwest, the kind of the future interstate area, interstate interchange. So here's, in purple, we'll see this, so it, it's essentially focused around the, the airport. We see some of these areas that are city owned and, you know, the Fenway Fields are zone industrial, but let's, let's not develop those. And then we have some of the areas that are impacted by airport zoning to be largely undevelopable. You know, side of a, you know, future, you know, public works, building whatnot. And then we have the McCullough storage buildings, they were kind of non-conforming use, they were kind of added in. So we have those properties on Forest Road I mentioned. And the few here on 2 and 10th Street, so this is all the I industrial.
Nothing up near downtown or down Broadway?
Not I industrial. We'll, we'll, we'll jump over to the, to the B3, which is the Lemon Industrial Business District. And so here my map will show you purple in a minute here. Come on. So that basically this 15th Street area is also zone industrial. My map is really slow to load here, but, okay, there we go. So this is a B3. So I'm not, for the uses I mentioned, it, you know, they, they could potentially go here. And that's, I like to, I'm glad you brought that up. Commissioner Miller is, you know, because these could also go there. Or, or not, you know, you know, maybe it could be scaled to different sizes. I was kind of applying more of the Band-Aid to the, to the I industrial zoning district, which is my intention here. And then, then we also have one final B3's zoned area. It's not currently served by public water and sewer. So it, you know, is a, and it, there's no immediate plans for that. You know, basically, you know, the highway aid is, is quite an impediment for that, for that utility extension. But, you know, we do have this area also, it's zoned same as that 15th Street Southwest area. That provided a good overview there?
Yep, thank you very much.
Commissioner Young?
I've got a few things. Over and over again, we say that we're going to attract new development that will present a positive image to the community. And I'm, I'm just not sure how we define that and how we use that, especially with industrial uses. There are things that, that many cities call industrial uses, transfer stations, scrap metal yards, automobile wrecking facilities, those are also industrial uses. And so I, I guess I don't know how we handle that. When we rewrite this, why are roof mounted solar energy systems accessory uses on almost all of our, of our codes? And, and I don't understand why that is the way it is. I think that rather than adding things to the list, which then creates a lot of controversy about, well, you're going to have a new use, so you're going to add this one to the list. We have a very, very broad term that says other uses similar to those permitted in this section as determined by the planning commission and the city council. So I'm not sure why we need to expand the list. Because that, that really does create a lot more controversy when we have something that is fairly broad and fairly inclusive and gives us a lot of latitude in the future.
Okay, a couple of things on that. The guidance I've gotten from the city attorney, and this is probably more, you know, implicit than explicit, is that, well, they have been explicit at times. A use should be listed, you know, if, and, and that's the way the zoning code's written, you know, anything that's not listed really is prohibited. And that catchall phrase has been in there for a number of years. But I think, you know, once the city attorney, you know, gets his hands on it, I think he'll eliminate that because of the, it just being overly vague. And, you know, you've noticed where, this is, this has come up where, you know, we, we added, you know, agriculture, they wanted, you know, adding agriculture as interim use in that B2 district, you know, the, for that property behind Menards. You know, that was coming, you know, it was guidance from, from the city attorney that basically want, they wanted that clarity. And I think that does provide more certainty for developers when they can look and see, oh yes, this is what I want. And I think creates a kind of clearer rules for staff as well. One thing that has been a popular inquiry is, you know, self-storage units. Right now they're basically a, a permitted use in the, in the, I think it's B3, permitted use in the B3, well, it was conditional use in the B2, you know, like where we brought in the Minnesota lakes, you know, last summer. And permitted use in B3, you know, like where, you know, Morley's, you know, property is on 15th Street, the Forest Lake Mini Storage. But, you know, there's been many folks who are asking for industrial, you know, this I industrial zoning district permits self-storage. And, you know, I say no, and I'm, it's so much easier for me to say no, because I don't think that that's, you know, any develop, I mean, it's really, unless you do multiple like story self-storage where it's all can, you know, kind of inner hallways. I really don't think there's a way you can present that as really attractive development. You know, the high quality that is the purpose of the industrial zoning district, like you mentioned. And it's, it's, you know, and I think that the way we get the higher, in some ways it's an easier way, function to have, actually have a list of permitted uses. And that provides some, some guidance, you know, to, to get the higher quality development. Because, you know, the, these are kind of larger structures. I mean, I think Team Vanage is the, like the poster child for what I think should be an industrial zoning district, a manufacturing facility that's self-contained, you know, there's trucking, there's, you know, it's a large amount of impervious surface, but it's interior storage, you don't have a need for screening of outdoor equipment or materials. And, you know, we do, and, you know, we, city staff does get these requests. And, you know, one day I got one for asphalt plant and I was glad I could say no, you know? I think that asphalt plant, you know, went next door.
Commissioner Young?
I, I'd like to follow up. So, so basically, what the planning commission is going to have to do is to think of every possible use for the next 20 years that we believe may come to Forest Lake and say, I would like to be here. I think that all of the planning commissioners and you Donovan have heard, oh, it's so hard to develop in Forest Lake. I, 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 I can't, I can't come here because you don't allow me to do what I want to do. So if, if we are trying to get more folks into Forest Lake, then we need to think of every possible thing that we would allow in an industrially zoned area. And quite frankly, we may have some very, very sharp attorneys, but I'm not sure that they all have good crystal balls. And so for us to imagine every use that we would want, and quite frankly, and in industrial uses, as it's described here, there is no place for Mr. Winnick to move his property elsewhere in the city. There is no place for Vinco, who is in our city now, to move into an industrially zoned area. When I think about the, the businesses that are here, this one is going to be kind of challenging.
Other comments concerned? Commissioner Batty?
Well, I just, I, I have a copy of the, a paper copy of the ordinance. I know that's kind of an old fashioned thing, but I, so I can, you can, look at more, more than one thing at a once.
Several of us do.
But I just noticed, you know, one of the things that I noticed here when I was looking through this, there's no word manufacturing doesn't show up at all in our, in our, any of, any of the three industrial zoning.
It, it does.
Or you, maybe you need to point it out, maybe I'm.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, I can show it to you. It just says manufacturing, it, it doesn't say light manufacturing, maybe, you know, here, I'll show you.
So under the, under the permitted use, or I'm under the.
Yeah, so this is industrial zoning district number, number two, coming in, manufacturing.
I don't think we're hearing your microphone Donovan.
I heard it.
I heard it.
Does that work?
Yep, nothing.
Okay.
I can't hear it on.
I stand, I stand corrected, but. I stand, I stand corrected, but so I was, I was.
You're the only one.
Oh, okay.
So I was also interested in in, you know. Like your kind of your comment about the the asphalt plant. And I I didn't know that I don't know that I completely understood the basis for your euphoria on that.
My basis is that within where industrial zoning district is, with it with this somewhat close adjacency to residential. I don't think that would be a good land use with the number of trucks, the fumes. Yeah.
I wouldn't argue that. In a heart, you know, in a heartbeat, I wouldn't argue that. I was just curious of about. Is it, you could say that because it's not a listed use is that I'm just, I'm curious how. How the logic of this works here.
Yeah, so basically in one of the constructions of zoning codes. This is kind of different than, you know, most American jurisprudence, that which is not expressly permitted is prohibited. So, you know, if it doesn't say manufacturing in the industrial zoning district. Industry manufacturing is not allowed in this area, you know, where it's zoned industrial.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, it 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 does have, you know, we had, there's a vacant parcel in that that northernmost B three district I I mentioned. And I've had a few inquiries around something close to a contractor yard. And or just people, that's what, you know, people want to come, you know, the business wants to come. Build a fence, build a small office and have that for storage of vehicles, equipment. You know, in in small office space. I interpret the code saying that that that's not, that's not. A permitted use. You know, and so I'm saying, you know, well, is that something now we want to, you know. We want to add in or or is it? Something that, well, it doesn't really have that kind of capital intensive, more, you know, higher employment potential. Because many of the uses that I have gotten inquiries about are those ones that. Have a lot more, you know, basically store, you know, site improvement versus actual structure construction. So there. You know, Forest Lake, economics are changing and Forest Lake is is a cheaper place to relocate, you know, just cheaper land. So we can fill up these areas, but I think the intention, if you can fill them up with, you know, with these types of uses that I'm getting inquiries with, but I think the intention is to have. You know, businesses that provide more of a job potential. You know, and are more intensive in in how they develop the the property.
Can I follow up?
Yeah.
So just kind of as we delve into this. Is there, how do we differentiate between manufacturing and light manufacturing? I'm not trying to be unkind here, but I I'm just curious. Do we at all differentiate between those? I mean, clearly, because there are some manufacturing facilities in that B three, in our B three zoning area, there's. Widget. Manufacturers and, you know, wood, wood, you know, wood manufacturing, you know.
Yeah.
Up there, and I'm just curious. So I'm, I'm after some of the same stuff here that. I I think most of the rest of you are, you know, I I want to, I want to see the the city develop. I want to see, I'm not looking for a stampede here, but. I I, you know, and so how can, I I guess one of the things that I've been interested in, you know, since, you know, even through the comprehensive plan process here. Is how can we enhance, you know. The look, the feel, the impression that people have of Forest Lake when it comes to some of these kind of things. I mean, we hear this. Weeping and gnashing of teeth over the fact that, you know, that are all of our utilities and services and stuff like that, you know. We, you know, it's costing us. What, two, whatever, twice the the. In the tax income that we get from residential and and a very small part of. The the business side of things. And I I this seems to me to be kind of a first foray into this. Into this area and I I'm just, I I was also surprised with this listing of. Of spaces that some of them seem to be very, you know, very specific and others. General, and I'm just curious how 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 we decide on. You know, kind of what we list specifically and what, again, what what is listed generally. I mean, like you have. On this, in the same list, you've got manufacturing, which covers a multitude. Of things, and then you've got other things that are, you know, very, very specific. You know, I mean, it is a one item deal, you know, I mean, not you say the word and I need to get back to. You know, like a warehouse warehousing and distribution, like a warehouse, there's nobody, nobody has any question in their minds about. That kind of thing. And and I look at the 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 list of what's the permitted uses under C that are there now. And then, and your your list, and I'm not, and don't take this personally, I'm just trying to understand here. It just seems like. A number of the things on here are particularly toward the end of this list are, you know, I mean, they are just, they are one item specific thing. And I'm just curious why. Why we would start doing, start down that road of listing these fairly detailed, specific things as opposed to keeping it. In 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 more general categories.
Okay. Well, in some ways, I think you're pointing out, this is something of the sausage making that that goes on, you know, where. And I see this in a lot of the zoning code, like there must have been some instance where. The code, you know, people, the council at the time was addressing a specific concern. And. Basically, let me start with the what you said last, like the two final ones that look very specific relate to. Those, those are commercial permitted uses. And also thinking of how, you know, this proximity to family fields and people have said there's nothing, you know, there's no place to. You know, for any kind of, you know, refreshment nearby. So that was kind of targeted to, well, this is permitted in other commercial areas, why not in industrial area and it's I industrial. The the fitness centers and private recreation facilities are locate are allowed in the B three. I thought, why don't we, what if we expanded that to the the I? And then. There's the other ones relate to. You know, basically ones I picked out of Elk River, Hugo, Hastings. Zoning codes, you know, what we often kind of calls our peer cities. And these are all attempt, just first of all, just to stimulate conversation, I'm not, I mean, these are ones I can live with. I mean, I guess in some way there there's, there's a selection process there. You know, these are ones that I, you know, I've received some inquiries on or seems like. There, you know, potentially could be a decent fit there or else, because I think. One portion of this has been the two big factors, I think, for this I industrial area has been, there hasn't been. The right road infrastructure built, like for instance, the McCullough property on it. On the south side of ninety seven, just west of. Interstate. To provide access to that road, it's, you know, it's Min dot, you know, deceleration lane, acceleration lane. You know, some a pretty hefty price tag. And I have talked to Vinco about, you know, that property, Miss Miss Young. But um, but then also the size of the parcels also, you know, it it now we know twenty twenty hindsight that when the city plotted those. Those Forest Lake Industrial Park lots, they're not really big enough for the five, ten, fifteen acre industrial sites that. We've we find, you know, because we get inquiries, we, you know, we're part of the MSP mailing list. In different like, you know, regional economic development organizations. And, you know, they're not looking for the, you know, two point five acre parcels, really. So some of these, there are more specific are related to, oh, what could fit on a two and a half acre lot. Also, I mean, kind of getting back to what Commissioner Young was saying that. I don't, I don't think there's a, there is a crystal ball out there that's going to predict everything, and that's kind of where. You know, if we can be more general that, you know, but not too general, then, you know, like. Then we can interpret, you know, allow as a zoning administrator to interpret. The, you know, a warehouse as a warehouse, I mean, something that is contained in a building, it's got a loading dock, truck traffic and. You know, a low parking requirement. I mean. Somewhat simple. I wish they were all that simple, but. And that's, I mean, there's actually a whole different philosophy around zoning codes, form based code, where you simply, all you do is regulate the box and you don't really. You know, you don't really regulate what goes on inside of it, you know, beyond certain parameters. We don't have that here, so we have this kind of what they call Euclidean zoning, where you are specifying uses in different areas. And that's kind of the operation. I mean, I can. You know, I mean, if if this, you know, we can, we can start, I can start over with this, this is just discussion. If you want more broad based things, I can go back to talk to. You know, just find out what what the what city attorney can can accept as far as. You know, how much latitude staff, planning commission, council can have. You know, because I I don't want to pretend that's, you know, that's a closed issue, you know, that's not, you know, that's closed discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner, break.
Yeah, I'm definitely. Open to the changes in in. To Commissioner Young's point, I definitely see where ambiguity could definitely give us, get us into. Some tight situations, but on the same note, to Donovan's point too, not making it too specific where there's, you know, some wiggle room and and stuff to work with, so. I just want to put that out there that. That that seems to make the most sense, I guess, in my mind, if I'm understanding everybody's point correctly.
Commissioner Young.
Donovan, I understand that Washington County is going to bring a household has waste facility up to Forest Lake. Would this fit in the I zoning district?
That would be a. Good question.
What is that type of message?
No one, no one asked me that.
It's a household has this. If you've ever gone to the Washington County Environmental Center that's down in Cottage Grove to take a fluorescent battery or oil paint or. Or whatever, instead of having to wait until those two weekends in June. It would have a permanent facility up here on this end of the county. And I'm just trying to figure out where that would go.
I think that. We have to say, you know, we have to add that. I mean, we have compost facility that which, you know, legalizes the the compost site that's been there for years, but. That, you know. And maybe it's government building. Actually, this this kind of gets, that actually gets us into. Another agenda item. Number ten, I I agenda item number ten. With the public institutional zoning districts, I actually, I would be recommending. Taking the land that is, you know, in the future land use plan designated public institutional and creating a zoning district. To specify, you know, so that those have some ways a better place to live and then it would, you would basically, you know. Allows a permitted use, that type of facility as a government, you know, facility.
So we could put a household has way site where the golf courses.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, that's a good location. You can get to it.
Actually, they cannot. That property has to remain park. Can't convert it to something like that. Having taken my beating on that whole discussion, so. Well, first on that subject. Back to our our number eight, this industrial, this, so first I clarify, if I understood you right when Kevin asked. We have three industrial districts, correct?
Actually, it's just two currently, but we'll all talk about a third, actually, tonight as an agenda item.
Well, you have the one off of Highway eight, you have the one over Fifteenth, and you have this one. Are those other ones are industrial districts also?
Oh, I'm sorry, I I thought you, no, it's, no, there's, there's two industrial districts, three areas. I'm sorry, I was confused.
So I spent my entire career pretty much in operations and manufacturing, and when I look at this list. And I've been to probably a hundred industrial parks. In the metro area due to some organizations. And all of this stuff shows up. In those, I I can't speak for the adult orientated businesses, but I can't speak for all the rest of them that use CDs. And when I really think of the industrial district, I think of, you know, like what Team Vantage has. Tip up building with a twenty four, probably a twenty four foot clear height. For a warehouse and they do what they kind of want in there without out. Or without any or very, very little outdoor storage. To me, that's an industrial district. When you get into, and I'll I'll give some specific names, you go down the freeway of J there, you got swing. And they have an outdoor yard there that. To me, it's, that's more heavy industrial versus manufacturing. So I I guess, not that I would be opposed to a swing, but I would think we'd want to take those on a case by case. Just because of the way they are, so I I would look for stuff that sits in. Buildings similar to Team Vantage has and ear grid and some of the other. Mr. Young.
Here, I'm I and and this, because I'm I'm struggling with with this too. I know that we'll use Vinco again. They don't have enough room on their property, so they are, they have part of their their operation in Forest Lake, and then they have part of it. Down in Hugo, next to the building center. That's a business that is has grown up in Forest Lake. Is that something that we would consider industrial? And then Interstate is another one that is here, and we've made accommodations for it. But would we consider that industrial? And if not, then what zoning district will we put those in? Should we create a new one that would be? As you called it, heavy manufacturing or heavy industrial? I I'm just not sure how how to do this. And I I also am really trying to think about what would I call? Vinco. They're a construction. They're a construction company. So do we add that to our list or not? I. I am struggling with this.
So what I, you know, I what I, yeah, me as what as well. I I would characterize them as both, you know, Vinco and Interstate. As contractor operations. So they have, you know, they they're not doing any really any retail. There, but it's a largely they're storing vehicles and material onsite and then, you know, going to job, you know. Moving those vehicles and material to their job sites on a daily basis.
And and what district do we allow them to be in?
Not, 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 no, they, no, currently, no.
Kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
So is this something that we consider valuable to Forest Lake or not? We argue, our our geography uniquely positions us. To have those kinds of companies here because we're above the split. They can get to either the west side or the east side very conveniently from Forest Lake. We are absolutely unique in that, much more than, well, except for Wyoming. But. If if we consider that a strength of Forest Lake, and y'all know that I consider our geography to be one of our greatest strengths. Shouldn't we take advantage of that in our zoning code?
I don't disagree. To me, the debate key to that is to figure out. Where can we put it? What I would call a little further away from the residential. Because the residents are not going to be happy with that much truck movement. Um, because their residents are not going to be happy with that much truck movement. Um, and, and possibly the six-foot barbed wire fence with all of the stuff that they're storing outside gets to stay inside where it belongs. And I understand they need that, you know, so when I, when I think of that, I think of, uh, right off, kind of where Interstate is, right at 97 and 61, you kind of back up to the airport there. You're, you know, you don't have any houses right in that area there. That, that's not a bad area. Um, maybe as you go down farther, a little bit down 61, um, no problem. As we get over closer to Fenway, and I go, well, I got a lot of residents there. We got a lot of other stuff, and I'm not so sure that it fits quite there. But then again, that's an opinion, not a fact.
And we've got the horseshoe manufacturer there. We've got the, uh, the folks that used to sell tractors and, and heavy equip, heavy farm implements there. Um, and Mindot is going to ask us to restrict the number of, um, entrances onto 97. So on that south side of 97 with easy access to the freeway, does that make sense? Because there aren't, you know, until you get to, to Fenway and, and by the quick trip, there aren't a whole lot of houses there.
Right. In, in the long-range transportation plan, there is a package road that basically is an extension of 208th Street that would, you know, allow that access, safe access, um, to those properties, you know, which we do expect that when they get developed, that they'll, they'll use that rear entrance as a primary access.
Other comments? I want, I want to keep the meeting moving along. You know, we, we, I've got a feeling that we could discuss, uh, zoning for hours because that's why we're here. Um, to try to make the city a better place, but I do need to move it along, uh, a little bit here. Donovan, do you have what you need for now, or do we just muddy the water so bad you would like some further?
Um, no, I, I have some things. I mean, you know, I, I know it's, I think, I don't think these remote meetings really do, you know, encourage, um, conversation in a way, but, um, and I do, it's difficult to have this, you know, have this thing where we generate, you know, dis- discussions. It's not generally what the planning commission does, um, in this, in this realm, but, um, I have some things to start with and, um, I think that you made some good points and also like, um, let me see what we can do and, um, you know, to kind of be general and specific, you know, that sort of thing, um, promote the purposes of, of that. Also want, you know, say with the contractor yards, you know, there is, like with many permitted uses, um, or you just land uses, there are a set, a set of, um, use standards so that, you know, it could be, you know, as long as, you know, if we look at, okay, we can allow this, well, let's say minimum 10-acre lot or something like that, so that it, it, we know that it can't go into certain areas where we don't want it to go. Um, or, you know, access to, you know, must have access to, you know, a state highway or something like that. Um, so there's ways to, um, make sure that we don't have those, those impacts on the more sensitive areas or residential that, you know, that we don't want to have. Next, um, on the agenda, I'd like to, um, present, um, some draft interstate commercial district, um, use standards. And so this is the area that, um, I referenced, referenced earlier that relates to the, um, the southwest corner where in our comp plan, a, a, a inter- interstate interchange is proposed. Um, there are no immediate plans for that. And if Commissioner Young had her way, it would never happen, but is in our comp plan and we need, we've sworn our oaths to abiding by the comp, following the comp plan, implementing it. Um, and so within the, um, within the comp plan, there's the future, future land use categories. And so this area is guided for, um, highway business. I'll show you that. I'll show you the pink commercial zone in there on the map. So it's land-guided for this district is intended for businesses that require proximity to the regional transportation infrastructure such as warehousing, wholesaling, e-commerce, light manufacturing and data centers. These uses typically include accompanying administrative offices and may include retail, wholesales of limited nature. Exterior storage or merchandise is kept to a minimum. And the, um, the, uh, the area. So that's kind of, you know, it's kind of meant to be the e-commerce thing. Some, you know, look at that, that linen, uh, menu, I forget the name of it. The lit, the big linen, you know, e-commerce one in Columbus there on the, you know, the east side of, you know, 35B. So that's, for me, that's kind of a model. And here, uh, you see, um, this image on your screen? I changed PDF. Um, so this is about, I think I said 13, I mean, it's rather large. It's envisioned to be the, you know, the, the 2040 Job Center. Um, and so I want to get Plan Commission, Plan Commissioner, uh, you know, feedback on, okay, what are, what are some, you know, some land uses that you think would fit here? And I've also proposed some basic language around purpose and design character, um, that relate to, you know, you know, what, you know, it being, you know, close to the highway, um, but still also allowing existing agricultural and residential uses to continue until, redevelopment occurs, acknowledging that, you know, you know, on the fast timeline of getting Interstate interchange, there would be 10 years from now. And, uh, no giggling, Commissioner Young. Um, and so basically I've kind of proposed here, things that relate to, and this is taken for some of those other, you know, industrial, um, uses, potential uses that, that we talked about earlier. Um, this relates to, um, you know, allowing those existing uses to continue, um, those that, you know, exist now, at least for the agriculture. Um, then brewery taproom, data center, health recreation facility, industrial condominium, some, you know, light, light fleet-based services, manufacturing, research, technology office, transportation fro- freight terminal, truck, truck and trailer sales, repair and rental. So things that actually are, you know, big land use, uses, um, and really do need that pro- close proximity to the interstate. And so, again, it's just, it's, um, trying to anticipate, um, you know, some ways, you know, where the market's going, um, what it would be, large land users. Um, some of these may be, may be actually able to exist without, um, public water and sewer. Um, and, but definitely would require, you know, road, um, road improvements, um, there. So again, I'd like to throw it open to the floor. Um, what do you think? I mean, is, you know, when we talked about this before, how does, how do these uses land to you? Or sound to you?
Before I take comments, I want to give a little more history on the back and I, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. I'm, I'm not sure how all this started. So when that pink area was boxed in for this new super kind of industrial park, it's, it's all predicated on the new interchange put in at 180. If the interchange doesn't come to 180th, this really is not going to happen. You're not going to have the access. Um, so there, there's a lot of communities that would like the interchange at 180th and Forest Lake's one of them. Columbus, Lino and Hugo. All four would have a corner of that interchange then. The other, otherwise the interchange is going to go to 170th. It's going to go one or the other is the thought from Mindot. Um, if it goes to 170th, it, this also doesn't look real good for Forest Lake to develop north of, at 180th here because there's no good way to get that mile north. So I, I just want, I want to keep that in mind that this is really going to be based on if the interchange comes here. So, Mr. Young?
And Anoka County, Washington County, Columbus and Hugo have all said that they do not want 180th, they want 170th. And, and that's, that's been pretty much made, made really clear to the, to the Mindot commissioners. Um, so I, I don't think it's going to happen here, but Donovan, when you say that in your design characteristics that you, you're, you're looking at things that will not have a lot of outside storage, could you help me understand the transportation and motor freight terminal, the truck and trailer sales and repair? Um, and, and how, and the light fleet-based services, um, because those all have a lot of truck storage outside.
I guess I should, yeah, yeah. For me, that, I read that as a material storage, you know, not, um, not the actual vehicle storage, which obviously, you know, will, will occur, you know, in the yards.
Okay. Would you consider that this would be a good place for a, um, a car, car sales thing? What, what, what do you call that, that little white bear area with all the car sales?
Auto dealerships.
Thank you.
Actually, that, that very well could be, um, there, there have been kind of, again, from talking to, you know, people on the phone, um, they've been, they're being squeezed out other places, especially the, the used car dealerships. Um, that's something certainly we can consider, you know.
Commissioner Miller?
Um, excuse me. I also think, um, this would be a more likely area, in my opinion, for something like the, the contractor operations, um, versus in the light industrial or in the industrial area. Like you said, because of all the, the homeowners and the schools and a lot of the other things up in Headwaters area, the roads. I would rather see the contractor stuff being down there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, to me, this would be like an giant industrial park like you might see in, uh, Plymouth always comes to mind, Eden Prairie, Chaska, where they got real wide roads, um, and it's just commercial, commercial building after commercial building with jobs. My only other comment, Donovan, is you have single, you have agricultural uses that were in existence as and now, would we want to do the same on single-family dwellings? Are we going to still allow?
Yeah, no, I think so. Yeah, I think, I, you know, as I was reading that, I think that, that is an admission. I, I, I do think that's a good idea.
Other comments, discussion?
And I'm still trying to understand why roof-mounted solar systems, like I want to put a solar array on my house, or I want to put it on my new manufacturing building, why is that a accessory use? Why not just, yeah, you can consider that as part of your construction.
I'm not sure. I mean, that's, that's something I really have not studied, you know, I think I've included that, um, we, you know, the, um, I don't know if that might be, uh, there's some, well, I guess Met Council requires like solar access or something like that. Um, that might be something that, uh, you know, might be that sort of Met Council requirement, or also, um, we currently don't allow any ground-mounted solar to any extent. Basically, it's limited to the accessory structure square footage of the, of the parcel. Um, you know, which pretty much, you know, caps out, um, you know, about 3,500 square feet for parcels up to 20 acres. And so maybe it's that tie-in to, you know, accessory structure. I'm not sure. But that's something you just don't like.
If I want to use the entire roof of my manufacturing facility to, um, to power my manufacturing facility, that's a no-no?
Oh, no, no, you can't.
Because it can only be the size of the accessories?
No, no, it's only on, no, if ground-mounted can only, is limited. Yeah, those roof-mounted, and I guess that's a question for me. Why is that listed as a land use? Because?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Other comments, discussion?
Mr. Batty? Not to, not to beat that to death, maybe it's, is it, does that have to do with these, uh, solar farms, you know, where they're, you know, building acres and acres of these, uh, solar panels? Is that, is that what it is?
We get that, we, that's the next agenda item.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Donovan, do you have what you need?
Um, yes. Thank you.
Very good. So we will move on to item, um, nine, additional or amended permitted land uses for districts. This is also a discussion item. And I assume Donovan, you'll be kicking us off.
That is a, a good assumption. Um, let me share, nope, sorry. I'm not seeing it. Um, actually, I'm creating a little bit of PowerPoint to make it probably easier to read. So looking at, uh, again, this is coming from, this is the idea of implementing, you know, text within the, uh, within the zoning code. Um, and, you know, and so I'd like to just kind of throw out different ideas, um, some things that relate to inquiries I've received or, um, you know, some, some, you know, some things that have been part of public discussion for a while. Um, so for potential land uses, um, of course, we have the accessory dwelling units and I think we left, and obviously those standards require a lot of refinement, um, but to list those as a potential land use, as a conditional use in the agriculture, rural residential, single-family and those other, um, residential zoning districts. Um, beekeeping, which my, my little bit of research on that, seems like there's a lot, there are a lot more difficulties um, with regulating that compared to chickens, but potentially, um, I'd like to put that forward. Um, Airbnb is something that mostly hear, um, people complaining about those, um, and there are bed and breakfast standards within the, within the, um, within the zoning code, um, but they're really rather outdated compared to what the Airbnb model usually is. Um, temporary livestock for vegetation management. Um, got a couple of inquiries on this and, uh, found out that even Maplewood does allow this. And basically you bring goats in, you have these kind of traveling fences. You put, you know, a little temporary, um, uh, you know, structure, you know, like a plastic kind of dome, maybe, um, for the, the livestock. And then they, you know, they do some buckthorn rule or whatever, you know, they clear the property as you, uh, mobile food trucks or food truck park. Um, something that we had a deputy clerk who actually produced some draft, the, uh, draft standards for those a couple of years ago. And, but, uh, potentially as, as a, as a land use, and right now that is a land use to be regulated, um, within the city currently, Washington County does regulate these and, uh, we haven't seen a real problem with it, but I wanted to bring it forward, um, to the Plan Commission. And then, um, another thing that was contained within the text of the, the comprehensive plan is the idea of a rural event center. Um, and then more generally just additional secondary incomes for, um, you know, for, uh, people owning ag land. Um, if you have any other things you want to throw in, um, rural event center, something that, um, you know, when we often hear about it, it seems to me it's, it's, it's the complaints. Um, I was talking to Ryan, our city engineer about it and because it's, it is allowed in Scandia. And I was asking kind of what their experience has been and, you know, I can get into that if you want to, um, you know, discuss that a little bit. And then also, and finally, um, just, this is actually another, um, inquiry. And this does relate to what you might call light manufacturing. Um, and I mean, these are all kind of buzzwords in a way, you know, maker space, innovation lab, artesian space. Um, I haven't done a lot of research on that, but potentially, um, like, again, just kind of throw that out there, um, for discussion. So I mean, these are all, you know, potentially what, you know, um, potentially land uses within, within the city. So again, kind of throw the floor open to the discussion.
Commissioner, break?
Um, it was, we're adding the solar farms on that, correct? To the discussion, I didn't see that on the PowerPoint.
Um, it's, I didn't list solar farms. Um, it's something that it, you know, I'm, I'm looking. It's, I didn't list solar farms. Um, it's something that it, you know, I'm I'm looking conflicted on. Um, because, you know, it's something we don't want to allow in areas that we have already designated for future infra, public infrastructure expansion, you know, public utility expansion. Um, and then we have some areas predominantly in the southeast area um, of the city that um right now in the twenty forty plan are 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 not designated for that. And it's, you know, perhaps public utilities and no, be, well, not for a long time, make sense in there. Um, but uh, it's um, I don't know, I mean, what, what do you think?
I mean, I think it's something we should keep on the table, I think, for discussion.
Okay.
I think there's certain restrictions, um, you know, for solar farms, you know, boundaries and stuff and wetlands and all that, and where they're going to be, you know, placed. But um, I I think definitely they would be good to discuss. That's just me.
Commissioner Young?
Um, I was curious as to why it's only outside the MUSEA boundary. For instance, um, I think that would be a good co, a a great co-use if we decide to put a public works facility um where the compost site is now. Um, putting a a a solar farm in there, I think would be a great co-use. So I was curious as to why only outside the MUSEA boundary. Um, not just Airbnb, but regular BMBs. Um, I'd I'd like to see that as as a permitted use in some areas. Um, also, yes, I have been nagging you about the accessory swelling units. Um, but I I want us to really think through this carefully because as, when I read the introduction. Um, I I I'm envisioning a multi-unit building. Three, four, five, six, eight units in an existing single-family zoning district or in a rural fi, rural residential zoning district. And I think in both of those two, I would really like to see it as not more than two additional dwelling units in rural residential and single family. And perhaps three additional dwelling units in an ag location. And again, I'm thinking of family farm sort of things where you need grandpa and grandma's house and then, you know, son and daughter-in-law and daughter and son-in-law, you know, something like that. Um, but I I I really do not want to see us trying to allow um, four, five, six plexes in our single-family zoning districts. Or the rural residential, to be honest, because that that gets the whole concept of rural residential to go away.
Yeah. Okay, certainly. Um, I, you know, in the I don't know if I live, remember, you know, we did discuss, you know, some, some potential standards, gosh, about a year ago, over a year. Um, and I don't recall, like, you know, thinking more than one, actually. Um.
I was just reading the introduction.
Okay.
Other comments? I have one, uh, you know, on the accessory dwelling units, I'm not opposed to them. I'm not a big fan of making these conditional uses because then it runs forever. I would be more in favor of having it written in the zoning, they can do it. Because if we decide later that this is not a good idea, then it'd be a non-conforming use just run forever with the land. I would prefer us to see something that um, a little more tightly regulated, not requiring a condition.
Certainly, in in my little bit of research on this, I did see there's some administrative uh kind of alternative approval for this. So that it could be more tightly regulated and simply like a building permit.
I'd be happier with that.
Commissioner Brink?
Um, yeah, just regarding the multi-generational expanded household, um, obviously there's been discussion on that and there's been a, I think, a need for that. But also, I think with the pandemic and people working from home, um, you've got people now turning a room in their house that is now an office that uh maybe otherwise could have been for another family member. But now, you know, that's less room that uh they would have to have, let's say, a mother-in-law or father-in-law or who knows, you know. Um, that would be able to stay in their house. So just another reason for that accessory dwelling unit to accommodate that.
Cause my guess is we're also, when we're trying to accommodate these, we don't, uh, you know, you're thinking one per. We, I, sits in the back of my mind is sewer is kind of tight all over the city. Um, and I would assume these people would need sewer. Or are they connecting to the current homeowner service? We already got pipe sizing issues in the community.
Yeah. So that's, that's again, kind of getting deeper into the, into the use standards. Um, so that uh, you know, maybe there's a minimum lot size required for these. So that, you know, we, we, you know, we can somewhat limit where they shouldn't go. Um, just for that kind of reason, just there's not public infrastructure to serve those.
Try, we're only having a general discussion tonight. Give you all the details. Other comments on any of these items or others you'd like to see? Commissioner Brink?
Um, Donovan, what is meant by beekeeping permitted in same areas as chickens? Are we talking about just within that lot or within, like, for example, I couldn't have, I don't think I can have chickens where I'm at, but isn't there areas within towns that you can't have this? You just mean within the same?
No, no, I mean, no, your wife may say you can't have chickens, but the zoning code does allow chickens. Um, and basically it's any, you know, place where there's single family um residents are allowed. And um, and it's less than five acres, I think. That's, that is just, it was kind of a um uh, I want to kind of provide a little bit of context for that. Um, so then basically all, you know, all the single family that, you know, the, you know, the ones that don't allow livestock. I mean, if you're, it's, even you could allow in those areas with, they allow livestock, but you don't have five acres. Um, this allows you to have bees, for instance, um, just five acres being that, you know, minimum size of where you can have, um, can't livestock below, below um, five acres. But uh, so it's meant to be more of, you know, just where the zoning code does allow chickens, you could also potentially allow beekeeping.
Commissioner Batty?
So, do we currently have an ordinance on beekeeping?
No, no, and it seems like they're, it's pretty complex, what I've, you know, there are rules out there. Um, but I, but I've gotten some inquiries around it and um, maybe people want to, I mean, you know, it's only been in, I think, twenty twelve is when they passed domesticated chickens um rule for, you know, all these residential um properties. Um, I think it's carrier pigeons, or racing pigeons is the other one. They're also allowed in the city. Commit, ex council member Young must remember those.
Well, this beekeeping thing is gonna, you know, it's gonna become a bigger and bigger deal here. You know, it it is.
So is there a downside to beekeeping? I mean, there's a, I'm not the smartest guy, but it seems like they got a couple of boxes out there and the bees all live inside.
And the next door neighbor is allergic and so then we have issues.
There is um, there's certain height requirements, I think, that you'd have to have for like um, a fence, for example, so bees. If I can't remember exactly what happens, if they fly just up and over a certain amount, and if it's a certain height, they actually really won't go over that fence. Um, but um, yeah, I mean, bees obviously get out. I have a friend who's has an APRE and he's got his own share of problems, but um, you know, obviously there's a decreased bee population. I'm sure there's a lot of people who like to uh try to combat that and.
And, you know, some of these, there, I've seen, you know, there is some, a process of approval that does involve consent of neighbors. Um, of course, this is like, it's only the current neighbors who get to say, your future neighbors don't get a say in that. Um, but uh, you know, but, you know, if you're, if there's, if there's interest, I can bring back some standards and we can explore, you know, how that might work.
Other comments? We're good?
Okay. Oh, maker space, was that just a buzzword or something you, like, like manufacturing? This was actually an inquiry in the MU two zoning district. Um, any, any thoughts on that one?
I'm sorry, Donovan, what was that?
The um, it was, oh, I added it, it was part of my PowerPoint, but it was um and I haven't really found the exact words, you know, Nashville and where else was it? Um, a few places, Indianapolis. Um, it's an idea that you, it could be, you know, something beyond shared uh coworking, a coworking space, you know, where you have like office space for multiple people. Where they just come in as needed, you know, kind of a membership or I'm not sure pays, you know, you go. Um, but Commissioner Batty knows I'm talking about.
Yep, I do. Cause I'm, um, cause I'm interested in that. It's a thing for hobbyists and uh, you know, uh, somebody will uh, put together a, for lack of a better word, a shop that has all kinds of power tools. And sometimes laser engravers and cutters, that sort of thing. It's a very popular item in those. And and then you, you uh have, there's different ways to subscribe or, you know, belong to these things. You can, you can be a member that can come and go as you please, or you can, you know, you can buy your time. It's, it's an up and coming thing. There's, there's three or four of them in the metro already. And uh, it's, it's probably gonna be um, something that that pops up. I I think it's a very positive thing myself.
I'm fine.
Often they have a tool library associated with them.
And they're, they're seen as, basically, you know, obviously the hobbyists, but there also can be incubators for businesses. Um, people who develop skills there, develop interests and realize, oh, they want to go off on their own and, you know, go then rent some other space. Um, and pursue their, their, their uh, their dream.
You know, as memory serves me, that someone uh, before they tore the library down, wanted to do something similar. Where they wanted to do a rented space for multiple people to come in and whatnot and so it's, we're just here.
Well, somebody has to be willing to make an initial investment, you know, in this, because they aren't, they aren't cheap, you know. And I mean, if it's gonna be good, it's gotta have good equipment and you have to take care of it and, and you can go in different directions. I mean, it can be woodshop oriented, could be welding metal oriented, can be artistic, you know, painting, sculpture oriented. Um, there's, there's a whole bunch of possibilities.
Other comments? Alrighty. Donovan, next on your list?
Yes, so um, I would like to um, present a uh, well, I guess maybe just, maybe just a quick head nod. Um, I, I do think that our, our licensed residential facility standards need to be updated. Um, and I'd like to see if I can get just basic consensus of high commission members to do that so that they can potentially accommodate um, what they're intended to do. Right now, it's, it's rather restrictive. Is that something you think is acceptable for me to pursue?
I do.
All right, thank you. Um, basic uh home occupation standards. Um, this obviously has been kind of bubbling in, you know, with some conversations with residents um or some ideas that get proposed to staff every now and then. Um, and, you know, it, I don't, I'm not sure where to change these where you don't start impacting them, because mostly people want to, like repurpose the homes as retails, was what I found. Um, but, you know, the current standards kind of are meant to be more kind of like office type use or something that of, where the, maybe you're, maybe you are actually doing some sales. But you're, you know, you're using the UPS or FedEx, you know, deliver deliveries to to do that, where the customers don't come to the house. Um, gun sales is one, it's, it's actually, um, I've seen a few of those. We've issued these home occupations type of compliances. Um, any ideas, any, any, any immediate thoughts on how that could be improved or concerns?
Commissioner Young?
I've, I've got some concerns about expanding this too much. Um, I'm, I'm looking at a um, a, a home that has suddenly been turned into a mechanic facility. And um, uh, there are, yeah, well, the problem is that that they have more cars than they can handle, and so they're parking them on the street. Um, which becomes a real problem. And so I like our, the way our home occupation is because basically, yes, you're, you're allowed to run your home cleaning company out of your home, as long as you don't have, you know, nine or ten employees and three trucks sitting in the driveway and, um, you know, employees coming back and forth. Um, and I like the, the way that we sort of parallel it by saying you have to stay within a regular um, home household waste. Um, I, I, I like the, the home occupation not being established prior to um, the members of the family, in other words, you're not buying a house to put a business in. Um, so I, I kind of like that. I don't have a lot of changes that I would propose to this. Um. But what are the concerns of the other commissioners? And should we, should we say, yes, you can run a business, any kind of business out of your home? Or should we continue to say, if you've got a retail business, it should be in a retail business space with parking, et cetera?
Other comments? Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Commissioner Young. You know, I think we have flexibility now to, to make exceptions or makes, make, you know, allow it or not allow it. I think the more you open it up, everybody pushes the envelope already. I think it's just gonna be, now it's gonna be more and more that they're gonna push it. So I don't see a whole lot of changes we would need to make to that unless somebody else has something I'm not seeing.
Commissioner Batty? Your I M U?
I was just curious about this. The home occupation shall not be established prior to the members of the family conducting the home occupation, taking possession of it and residing in the dwelling. So I, I built a house on Forest Lake. I was an architect before I built the house. I, you know, I, at some point in time after I bought the house, or I mean, I built the house, I decided to move my office into my the lower level of my house. I mean, I, it, it, it seemed like that's just an extremely difficult thing to, um, I, I'm just curious of what that is. Is that, is this, does this cart back to this retail, this idea of using the house for retail? I'm just curious. Uh, and then maybe in a more general way, do, are you getting pressure on this? Or are you, is there complaints or why, why put this on the agenda in the first place?
I, I think that the intent of this is that you need to reside in the home before the business starts. If I'm understanding it correctly, I don't think they care, we don't care once you're living in the home. But we don't, but I think Donovan's trying to get at here is that we don't want you to start your architectural firm in a house. And then maybe later move in or maybe not move in.
Okay, I could see that, yeah.
It, yeah, it's just, it's trying to maintain the, the primacy of the single-family dwelling, you know, so that this, this occupation, you know, doesn't precede your actual occupation of the home.
Let me, can I throw on, uh, can I, one of, I'll, I'll tell you a thought that I've had, you know. Maybe I shouldn't do this, but, you know, the restaurant there on the lake that has had a hard time um, making it here as of late. You know, I, I've thought, you know, boy, that would be a good place for me to buy if I wanted to live on the lake. I could, I could, I'd have plenty of room to put a residence in there and plenty of, plenty of room to have. I'd have plenty of room to put a residence in there and plenty of, plenty of room to have a really nice architectural office in there. And you're saying I can't do that, right? Yeah, that was said a little bit, because it's not gonna happen, but. The thought is.
Probably based on zoning.
No, but I don't think that we restrict currently. The ability to. Live in a portion of a commercial establishment. So if it was the architectural firm and you built. A part of it to be your residence. A little history, we, we had. Many. Well. A lot of years ago. Some folks that had a electrical company. And they were trying to purchase a home in a residential district only for the electric company. And so that's kind of how that happened.
Okay.
Yeah, and so. Yeah, so, so Commissioner Batty, just to clarify, if you certainly could occupy. You know, the, the restaurant space, you might get some midnight visitors who understand that there's been a change in use, but. As long as you, is, you know, as long as there's the, you're not employing other people, you know, outside the household within the firm. And the car. There's not more than one car, you know, you know, added, you know, parked on the site, you know, additional related to the business. You could do that. I mean, we have, there're CPAs, you know, hair salons. There's other kind of, you know, kind of more like office type uses. That. Yeah, so that, I mean, it's certainly, I think the park board has talked about wanting to, you know, take it over and have a, you know. Luxury, you know, resort. Experience or something, you know, so you have might have some competition. On purchasing that.
Commissioner Miller?
I was just gonna say the park board should take it over and move the boat club out there.
Other comments? I don't, Commissioner Brink, was your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say there was nothing initially that I thought really need to be changed as far as the current rules, so. All makes sense to me.
Any final closing comments on this section?
There, I have a couple more. Couple more questions I'd like to pose. And this relates to existing standards. And. These relate to, this was actually relates to a real inquiry and like to see what the plan commissions. Take is on this one. So I mentioned in, in the industrial zoning district, a. Transportation and motor freight terminal, you know, as a, it's a permitted use. So this is the current zoning tax on your screen. And there's use standards for a transportation motor freight terminal. And there's actually. A. Clause here. That I'm not sure what the history is, but it relates to prohibiting, I'm kind of bold that one. The sentence onsite maintenance of vehicles and fueling of vehicles is prohibited. And it seemed to me like related to, you know, transportation, motor freight terminal, you, you have a fleet. It's, it'd be unavoidable or just, you know. Infusible or just not economically viable, you know, useful to not maintain your fleet. You know, within a motor freight terminal. So I wanted. Get, and this would, of course, this is current zoning tax require a zoning text amendment. Individually or, you know, perhaps is this comprehensive zoning, want to get your take on whether you think that. At least the onsite maintenance of vehicles is okay. Motor, the fueling of vehicles perhaps that's, that's a different matter and maybe. You know, Commissioner Keen, who's kind of worked with fleets and, and, you know, maybe can weigh in, he has some specific. You know, expert knowledge in this. Not to put you on the, on the spot, Mike.
Commissioner Keen? I think he's frozen. Commissioner Young?
Having run a garbage fleet or two. It's. It depends on the size of your operation as to whether or not you're going to do some onsite maintenance. Yes, and we discussed it the, the other night. Changing out batteries, changing out lights, that's one thing. We had that, you know, the other night that we talked about. Doing trannies and things like that, that's often really specialized. But. Changing oil on, on, on garbage trucks, working on hydraulics, maybe doing some light welding. That kind of a fleet operation is, is really standard. And that's the kind of thing that most fleets would want to be able to do. So that they could, they could, if it's a. Over the road rig, they'd, they'd want to be able to do some maintenance on their fifth wheels and greasing. They'd want to be able to work on their hydraulics. And quite frankly. I don't understand why we prohibit the fuel because that, that is quite frankly. A, a big deal when you, when you're, when your folks come in for the night, you want them to be able to fuel up at your facility at night. There, because then while they're fueling, they can do their post-trip DOTs.
Commissioner Young, I got a question for you then. How, how do we handle? To me, it's always a hazmat part of this, you know, you've got, you got great places, they do a wonderful job, they keep everything spotless and then you get. Some yahoo out there who is spilling oil all over his place and he's dripping it. What are the regs on that kind of? Part of the operation so we don't end up with a green field? Or brown field?
Most cities actually have building inspectors and code inspectors. And part of your, your permit or your code for that facility are housekeeping standards, just basic housekeeping standards. The PCA is also going to have some real challenges with you if you are doing a lot of fuel spillage, five gallons is. Or it was the, the amount that you could spill without calling the PCA duty officer. And so. In terms of fuel spillage, ditto with oil. And so. You can control it either through your cities. Building inspector, doing a regular operation. Or if it's a large amount, PCA comes into control and some, some watershed districts also have that kind of command and control. I'm not sure about our, of our watershed district. And then finally, to, to be brutally honest. If you run that kind of an operation, you're going to have a bunch of workers comp problems. And. Workers comp will kill you on a fleet operation. So if you're not doing good housekeeping, you've got a lot of slipfalls, you gotta, you got a lot of mess and. It's just good business. About to have that kind of. That kind of operation.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Keen?
Does the city have any plans for enforcing any of this? If it was, you know, like the, the homeowner who's going to do auto repair shop out of his garage and driveway and. He's got three leaking vehicles sitting out on a city street and he can't get to them for like 24 hours. And so now the, the new blacktop street they put in last year is. Is starting to rot away because of the hydraulics fluid and oil and. Then he's got all these clunkers parked in his yard and I, I know they might be gone at night and the hoods are closed and stuff, but. But, you know, who, who enforces those rules in this city?
Donovan?
Yeah, and that's something we, we do, we follow up on and, and, you know, car repair is, is, is prohibited as a home occupation. And, you know, there's one place that currently I, you know, sending some letters to that. You know, it has vehicles in various states of disrepair. So, yeah, thanks for reminding me, Mike. No, but.
You got two of them on July.
Yes, ma'am.
Two on July.
Well, that one, yeah, that one's getting, that one's also gotten special attention.
I, I didn't have anyone in mind in particular, but I've just seen it over the years where. People have got, you know, they're doing. More than one or two vehicles at a time, that's all.
Other comments? Donovan? You good?
Yes, sir.
So I think, am I correct? I'm kind of trying to follow your list here and I'm a little lost, but I think we want to move to item 10.
Correct.
Draft, which is draft public industrial or institutional zoning district land use.
Correct. And so. You know, as we look over the city, there are. There, in the future land use plan, there is a kind of a light blue colored. Areas. That we see. Located where. There are. Churches and schools. So here we can see the, some of the Forest Lake schools there. See a MinDOT yard over on the west side of I-35. The area that we mentioned before around the future, you know, hazmat site, the city public works area. And I'm sorry, further down, you know, at the end of the, kind of the runway area. Runway approach for the airport. And so currently there is not a. A. Zoning district for these areas. And I believe it's something that. I think, you know, can be regulated in a different way and perhaps create the, you know, these are, do exist as special districts and maybe. One thing based on our conversation tonight, maybe we should make sign standards for a public institutional. Zoned areas, create within a zoning district so that standards are clear. And so what I've provided in the packet is a. Is a draft collection of. Of. You know, including the purposes and design character for a public institutional land use. And. And so, you know, briefly, so it's, you know, to ensure that the public and institutional use of property is related to the purposes and policies of the general plan. I mean. So basic language, but then kind of creating the area. And then, you know, having permitted uses that relate to what we've seen now. You know, it's government or, you know, place of worship. Uses and then general some ones that we might see as nonprofits. So we have airport, art gallery, clubber lodge, community recreation center, i.e. the, you know, the YMCA area. You know, government building, central government buildings, hospitals, library, museum, office, place of worship. Public recreation, school, specialty school, transit facilities. And again, those roof mounted solar energy systems. As well as what we've seen, you know, a lot by conditional use, columbarium and cemetery within. These. You know, within these light blue areas. And so I just want to get kind of again, kind of take the temperature of, of the plan commission on. With your support, you know, further investigating this and idea. So there is a specific zoning district with standards for these public and institutional. You know, land uses.
Commissioner Brink?
So Donovan, are you saying if I wanted to revert my house back into a hospital, I can't do that under this. Current map?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So. Donovan, don't we currently, all of those aren't actually districts for like the churches are. And whatnot, don't they just use the underlying zoning the district that they're in currently?
They do, they do. And so it's, you know, these are all residential districts. It's MXR1 or SF. And that is, that is something to me, it's kind of an. Unanswered question because, you know, they've, you know, we've, we've processed all these conditional use permits. For these, those don't really go away. For like the, you know, say the churches or the schools. And so I'm not, you know, I'm not sure exactly how that would work. I could definitely find out, but then, or maybe it's just something, it's, it's public institutional and it relates to, you know, government, you know, facilities and. And so that maybe that's, that's how that it comes out. And basically that underlying zoning is, you know, still stays. But to me, it just seems like, I want to have the conversation because it seems like it's a missing. I'm not sure if, if. You know, in a previous comprehensive rezoning, you know, if this discussion came up and maybe I'm just trying to, you know. Cover ground that's already been discussed and discarded as an idea as, as having a public institutional zoning district. Would you, could you shed any light on that? Are, are veterans?
Like more like a shoreline ordinance or overlay district versus. I'm really having a hard time getting these separate districts within.
No, it would, it would be the under, it would be the zoning district rather than having the underlining, underlying zoning district. As we, as we now have.
Commissioner Batty?
Just a little history on this. I, you know, with the work and. That I've been involved in over the years, I've run into this type of zoning quite often. So it is fairly common out there. I think Wyoming is, is, is set up pretty much this, this way. I don't know, I, I. Don't know about the list, the total list, but I know places of worship. In Wyoming are, are, are included in this. I, I. I was gonna. Could you, Donovan, for including cemeteries and columbariums and, but excluding mausoleums?
Good point.
I don't think that we've ever had a zoning district that was specific to institutional and governmental uses. Not as long as. As I've been watching planning. So call that. Ninety-five, ninety-six? Or watching planning in Forest Lake.
Commissioner Brink?
So Commissioner Batty, you said that Wyoming does have this, you know, any other towns that have a specific zoning?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've worked over a. You know, a good share of the Midwest here and I've run into it quite often. Down in the, in, in, over in Wisconsin, down along the lake there, I've done, I've worked pretty much. Right up the lake there and, and run into it in a number of different communities. So it's not a unique thing.
All the hippos cities are adopting this.
How does this work then, Donovan? Where. I want to build an, I want to build a new church, let's say. So I go on, I buy some residential property because I can and I can put my church there. Our first step then would be to rezone it?
No, I don't think, I don't think the conditional use goes away for the, for, you know, in other zoning districts. That's not what I envision. I mean, it'd still be possible. You know, I mean, so, but you would, it would basically kind of provide just more certainty around this. I mean, one thing I've come up with is. You know, they, like the, the high school has, wants to do like another storage building that, you know, for whatever club. Well, they need to come and get a conditional use permit amendment, which you might say that's a good thing, but to me, if, if there was more latitude for staff to kind of. You know, say whether really this was significant or not, which there is for like site plan, you know, reviews. Which I think extends a little bit to conditional use permit amendments, but. You know. It would, I think it would just, you know, or. A church maybe wanted to, you know, like, I did answer the question recently, the church wanted to expand the columbarium. And then we looked, we looked at the record and found out, oh, actually it's just filling out the one they started years ago. They built, built only half of it. So now they're building the second half, I guess, you know, as they, as they've needed to. But if they want to add a third little row of. But if they want to add a third little row of columbariums, that potentially could be a, a, you know, a conditional use permit amendment. And it's just for like a, you know, a larger brick wall, you know? So I guess, I think I'd like to have some of these places that are special districts, maybe a little more latitude so that they can do what they do. And I have to come back for permission for things that, you know, and maybe in other areas that wouldn't require that sort of, you know, planning, you know, official public review or approval.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I guess my statement was, or what I was just thinking is, as we were talking about the schools is sometimes, I just, and Donovan, I think you answered the question, but my concern was, a lot of times schools are built based on demand, based on population growth, based on housing and things like that in areas. And if you start designating areas that, you know, basically institution or public zoning, then we'd be back to, let's say there's a huge growth on the, on the south end of the city, but it's not zoned for this public institutional zoning. And they don't want to put their school, let's say up on the north side where we have the zoning. Are you saying they could still apply for conditional use permit? Or are they going to be restricted to us saying, nope, you gotta go into the institutional zoning, you can't put this school here?
Yeah. So I, I mean, this is, I mean, this is good because I hadn't considered how that, you know, could impact new, new schools. But my thinking so far is that, you know, not to impact that. If, if, you know, someone wanted to bring a school in, it still would be a conditional use and we go through that, that review process for, you know, for, you know, you know, official, official review. And, you know, and if they got the conditional use permit, it would, it would basically cement that. And maybe, you know, in the future, that's when the future land use plan might include that site or not, you know, it, well, actually, I guess it would kind of made you'd want, I mean, that would seem to make, make sense. It would be included in the future. But I don't know. I, this is, this is something that, you know, this is up for discussion.
Commissioner Young?
Well, we had the conceptual discussion of the tiny houses at the church. It was sort of presented that they can do what they darn well please because they have the church designation. So now, why, if, if we did the institutional, how, how would that play in? And if the church can do what they kind of darn well please, now I'm wondering why we had to do the CUP for the columbarium.
There is, it, you know, the, the phrase that the church can do what they damn well please would just the city attorney's head just explode. Okay? Certainly it does. It is kind of act, it's Arlopa, it's Religious Institutions Land Use, Religious and Institutionalized Persons Land Use Act. It's a federal act. And it doesn't give, you know, it certainly has a certain kind of kryptonite quality to zoning. But the, it doesn't, doesn't certain, doesn't just erase, you know, zoning standards from, from, uh, you know, from, you know, from that, you know, that property. What it does, it says that it cannot, that the, the, the city cannot do a substantial burden upon their practice of their, of their religion at that site. You know, like the church, like the city couldn't say, well, you can't put up a 50 foot steeple. You know, because right now the steeples are 45 feet max in the city or something like that, you know? Because 50 is closer to heaven, you know, so that's why they put it up at 50. So basically you can't, you know, can't interfere with their religious. So the city couldn't say no to a columbarium if that was part of, you know, the religious ritual around burial. But, but they still means the, I mean, the house, place of worship still needs to go through the C process, follow certain standards, get a billing permit or not. In this case, columbariums don't require billing permit in City Forest Lake, I found out recently. But, uh, so it's, it's, it's a little bit of a nuanced discussion there, but it's, you know, zoning still does apply.
Commissioner Batty?
There's another issue that I've run into with this type of zoning here. And that is sometime, you know, quite often acreages are involved with this and sometimes there, you get people buying land, you know, part of it's in, parts, part of it's in the institutional zoning and, or, or they'll, they'll have a church and build it there and then they'll want to expand and buy land that's not zoned. And you've got, you know, you've, so it's just a, a probably a logistical thing that's got to be worked out. But it, it, you know, this kind of adds a twist to that. I think you really got to carefully, I mean, I can see that a number of these things are, are, you know, logical in here. I, I just, but I think you've got to carefully think through and no pun intended, the edges of this thing and how it, it's going to work within the rest of the fabric of the community here.
Other comments, concerns? Some idea of how to proceed here Donovan? Or would you need more input? My general consensus is they were all a wee bit nervous about going out.
Yeah.
So I think we're going to push this on better.
No, that's, no, that's helpful though. I think, you know, I think raising more questions is good. So that's what I, I want discussion and so on. Discussion is those questions. So thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to item number 11, which is other. Typically I would start with our council person, but I can see that she is not here this evening. So is there any issue anybody would like to bring up? Donovan?
Okay. Or Commissioner Keen, you want to go first? I've been, I've been talking a lot tonight.
I was just wondering Donovan, has, has the city pursued the Winnick area at all for their CUP? And the shrub trees that we, I know, we discussed this a couple of years ago. We gave them till, you know, the spring or the fall. And then he came back with solved problems and we had everything solved, but then, you know, like nothing ever happened. It's been years.
Nothing has happened. I don't really, you know, it, it, I think we've been focused on kind of the, the building process of, you know, as far as the, the leadership, you know, getting roads paved and, you know, long-term financial, you know, decisions made. And so I, I guess that's understanding that compliance there is, is not an easy task. I think at this point that, you know, we've just decided to let that be at the moment.
I was just curious because I, I get people ask me, you know, I mean, it's been an eyesore. It's right in the middle of city. It's on one of our major intersections on Office 61 and, you know, people are just curious, you know, is the city going to do anything or they're just going to let them do what he wants?
Donovan, you had something?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you. Um, just a little bit of housekeeping. Whenever there's a public decision for denial, that following that, at the following meeting, staff will prepare and actually with assistance, assistance of the city attorney, a resolution of denial for council's consideration that states the reasons why, so that it's clear that, you know, that there's a firm basis, you know, for that decision. So I'll bring that at our next planning commission meeting.
Regarding to the decision with the high school sign?
Correct, correct. And something else I want to, uh, offer is maybe it's a little bit of a reminder. I mean, I think it's a reminder. It's for me, I'm always kind of, I'm learning more about these. I had to go to the city attorney to discuss it and it's, it relates to, and this is, could be something that we're going to be experiencing now if we get more subdivision applications in. And that is developers reaching out to planning commission members and to just, to discuss your projects. And, and this is something that I never encourage developers. I'd never give out, you know, contact information for planning commission members. And, you know, in my discussion with the city attorney, he didn't say, you know, hang up the phone when they call. Although of course you can choose not to speak. But, but there's one piece of it is that, you know, what he, what he did encourage is that if developers do call, you know, you could listen, but then state firmly that anything, any information that the developer is providing in this private conversation, this ex parte conversation, it should be repeated, should be presented to the planning commission so that they can base their decision upon the full range of, of information. And that, you know, the planning commissions can get in trouble when a decision is made based on conversations privately, where decisions are based on, on that, those, you know, information gained privately. And really the, it's most proper that commissioners base their decisions on the information that's presented during the public hearing, during the public presentations, public testimony, you know, but that we all, that we're gathering together with the same fact set and then basing decision on that fact set. So I strongly encourage you to, if you're contacted, to say the message, yeah, hey, I'd like, you know, that's, that's a good point. Present it at the planning commission so they can, they can, they can also know this. They can also hear your persuasion. You know, if it's that important to call me about it, well, it's really important for you also to express it in a public forum so that it can be used to give you the result you want, you know, at that planning commission meeting, at that public meeting. So I just wanted to offer that as either information or a reminder around those type of conversations.
Commissioner Young?
And the gentleman in question did not like hearing that. I, I, you know, I, I explained it. No, I, I, I'm, I'm not going to, going to discuss that. I'm not interested. Bring it to the commission then. That's, he didn't appreciate that.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, and I would echo that. I think you're walking a real fine line when you even entertain that conversation, especially if you vote in favor of something and it's determined later that maybe you voted that way because you had a private conversation. I think you're opening up a lot of trouble for the city and, and for our commission. So I don't think that's right. I think it's, it's best to say, those are things that we can discuss at the planning commission meeting. You're welcome to join us and have all the conversation you'd like.
Commissioner Batty?
This is changing the subject, but I, I've been at, I'll just state it this way, in a general way. I've been at multiple planning commissions, not this one, where when a, a motion to approve was denied, that a, it was immediately followed by a motion to deny. And I'm, I'm not, I, I was, I, I've got Robert's Rules of Orders here and I don't, I, I couldn't, I can't, I don't, it's hiding behind something here. So I, I couldn't, couldn't find it. But I, 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 I don't know if that's a, if that's an issue or not. I'm just telling you, my experience has included multiple times seeing when there was a, a mission, a motion denied, or where a motion to approve something was denied, that it was immediately followed by a motion to deny, which then would have passed. I don't know what would have happened here with a tie that, this, something that so rarely happens. I don't know if that's a, an issue or not. I, I just brought it up. The Department of Redundancy Department, right, yeah.
Other issues, comments? I have one. I have a question for the commissioners this evening. For, for many years, the commission ran what I would call very informally, by a lot of first names. When Chair Langus ran it, we went by commissioners. And what I'm looking for is, what is your preference? I don't really care either way. But I just, if you have a preference, I would just like to know. If you want to keep it like it's been, that's fine. I don't really care. I just want to make it the most productive meeting that we can make. Commissioner Miller?
You can call me anything you would like.
Commissioner Young?
My father's line was, call me anything you want, just don't call me late to dinner.
Let's wait for someone to say that.
I go by my lord or my liege.
Personally, I do better with first names and that's why I'm asking if it went, if it weren't to offend you, I would go back to that. But if, if you would prefer we stay on a more formal, I'm more than happy to comply with that. And I'm willing to go in. Commissioner Brink?
I'm playing with first name. I think with roll call though, we just do the commissioner or we would do first names, but yeah, it doesn't matter to me either. So.
Alrighty.
It makes no difference to me what you do. It's whatever you're comfortable doing. I, I just, I just want to get the job done. I don't care how it sounds.
You and me both. Alrighty, based on that, I'll use first names. We'll see how, yes?
Oh, I just, I want, I had another, another mention of something. I thought you were about to call for another motion.
I was getting there.
I, oh yeah, but just want to mention that we do have an agenda for the March 24th meeting. The Timber Ridge 2 final PUD is, is on the docket. So we'll see you in a couple, couple of weeks.
Very good. Commissioner Keen?
Or Mike. Say Donovan, have you heard anything lately or any feedback about the little houses?
Yes. And it is, oh Karen, you want to say something too? The, it's not specific to Forest Lake or the, you know, the faith Lutheran church, but there is a bill now and it's got a few sponsors in the state legislature to, to allow, you know, sacred settlements. And the, the current draft text pretty much just, you know, blindsides all the zoning rules. And, and, you know, allows them as a permitted use on, in religious, you know, religious property. And that's kind of, that's quite a generalization and that's still a bill and still, it, I don't think it's been voted out of committee, but it, you know, it's gotten some traction. So that's, well, I think we're going to see some, some of that in public discussion, you know, coming up. But, so we'll see where that goes. But currently, you know, we haven't met with that project team since, it might've been sometime in the, the summer, you know, and we used to have another meeting pending to talk about safety issues. But we haven't established that one yet. So that's really, they're, I think they're seeking to get the, you know, the, you know, state statute changed so that they can really enable that, you know, this type of, you know, development on their church property.
So basically every church could have a hundred tiny houses?
There's, there's really no limit within the, the state statute. And so that would come down to this, you know, the health, health, safety and public welfare piece of it. And that's, I think it's one of the main critiques of it is that, you know, there's good, really no kind of, you know, limitations to it that, that really reflect why, you know, why we only allow certain types of densities of, of habitation for, for different reasons.
A lot of solar panels on those roofs.
Based on that, Chair will take a motion to adjourn for this evening. Commissioner Miller?
I would make, I would make that motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Keen, seconds? Harvey?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for participating this evening. See you in a couple of weeks.